So I think that...
It can stay if they want to listen.
So with that, Paul, do you have a presentation today?
I don't have any PowerPoints today.
Wow.
Wanted you to stay awake.
That was important.
Turn the lights off.
I've always been riveted by your presentation.
I think it's great that we're here halfway through to sort of get an update on some of the major points and issues that we've been working on. And we've begun our tour with the Boards of Selectmen now. We were in Chatham last night, so we're four down, 11 to go. And talking about similar issues with them, too. And the major issues are really wind, wastewater, economic development. And then we've got, we've made some significant progress with solid waste, some regionalization, and then some of the internal things that the Commission, the update. Starting with that last, we should have our new website up and running, which was something we've been working on for six months now. And I think that that can serve a little bit as a model for the county, testing out different little beta packages that we put together there. So that'll be up and running. Hopefully, we will unveil that on May 9th and 10th, when we're going to have this economic summit at the Baccusit Inn in Harwich.
We're coming.
Good. That's, we like that.
We had to sign up.
Welcome to Harwich.
Yeah, we had to get past PayPal.
I know the address says Chatham sometimes, but that's sort of like...
No, that's where they advertise outside, but Harwich is pleased to receive their test money.
Yes, well, we're glad to be there. So we're going to be there. And this is going to be an interesting day and a half because it's jointly sponsored by the Cape Cod Commission, County Economic Development Council, Cape Cod Regional Chamber of Commerce, Cape Cod Tech Collaborative, Open Cape, and IBM as a major sponsor. So it's really this sort of, it's this intersection of tech stuff, the broadband initiative, and water quality. And so I think it's going to be fascinating, some breakout sessions that are going to be part of that discussion. But it starts to drive the economic development discussion that we're having, which is about Open Cape. You can ask questions.
No, I was just going to ask, is that open to the public or is that mainly being, you know, is it the municipalities?
I believe it is open to the public.
It is, so that is...
They did require a pre-registration.
A pre-registration.
But there's no charge associated.
It's a pre-registration, but it's not necessarily just for elected officials or town municipality people or anything.
However, there is a charge if you decide to have breakfast or dinner.
Yes, if there's food involved, there's a charge.
Yes, okay.
But you can come for the sessions that are held on the day.
The sessions are free. Yeah, so it's, I think this is going to be sort of a first. And at that, we're going to do our SEDs update at that meeting. So our Conference of Economic Development Strategy update. So we look forward to doing that. And really, it was a bunch of the organizations, we are increasingly working together on issues, which I think means we're sort of at the right level when we're talking about economic development. And so instead of five different organizations having five different spring meetings, we decided to sort of do it all at once. And so I'm hopeful that this is going to be a very enlightening summit and not just a run-of-the-mill kind of meeting. But it's, the SEDs will, the projects will be updated then. We're moving forward on that. And so after the May 9th and 10th meeting, I'd like to come back and just give you a SEDs presentation based on our second annual update of that document. I had a meeting with the National Marine Life Center this morning, and there's some interesting stuff going around the SEDs document with particular pieces that we're doing. So economic development is moving, our partnership with IBM, Phase One is almost done, so we'll have a scoping report that we can talk to you about, our initiative there for Smarter Cape Cod. We had a meeting three weeks ago at the Green Biological Labs in Woods Hole in Falmouth. That was invitation-only, it was really for researchers at HUe and MBL. HUe has a relationship with MIT, and MBL has a relationship with Brown, working in this water quality space. So it was really about this sort of creating the Center for Innovation here. And EPA was there, they talked about their efforts at technology clusters, again, trying to tie environmental protection together with economic vitality.
That economic, the clusters, that's not a new concept.
No.
It's been up and down.
Well, a lot of the clusters have been, you know, life science clusters, but in the EPA, they, their major clusters are the Cincinnati office, where a lot of quality work is done. It involves three states, Ohio, Indiana, and Kentucky. And it is primarily looking at drinking water. So there is no tech cluster in the marine ecosystems and saltwater systems yet. So we think, given the relationships of the two Woods Hole, of HUe and MBL, and their relationships with Cambridge and MIT and Providence and Brown, that there might be the groundwork for a multi-state collaboration between Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and the Cape being the midpoint. You know, uniquely situated right between Providence and Boston, and having us be sort of the testbed. And so there, I think there will be an announcement at the summit about sort of a live-on center down there in Woods Hole, where we'll allow these technology companies to come in and actually sort of live down there and work in that environment. And I think the Cape itself could be used as a testbed for that water space. So the water quality piece, the economic development piece continues. Open Cape's making progress, and so we'll have a lot to say upon the economic development side.
On the SEDs update, one of the concerns that I've expressed in the past is the, you know, we had a set number, and we basically made a lot of progress in one area.
Yeah.
And what I'm curious about is to where we are with regard to the other...
We've made a lot of progress in a lot of areas. I would say that there are five major SEDs projects where there's been some major progress made. What we haven't done is a good job of telling people sort of where we are on these projects. And, you know, I know the SEDs document works, because I spent three hours with the Chamber of Commerce on Monday at their strategic planning session, and everybody talks about SEDs now. It's sort of, it becomes that unifying piece. And even the EDC Small Grants Program now, I think they want to sort of align that, what is supporting SEDs projects. We've used ELTA money from the state to align with SEDs projects. So it is really creating that critical mass around these 16 projects and getting them the funding that they need in order to get to the next step. So I think that there's been some major improvements made in the process of formulating regional economic development policy. And I think it will undoubtedly, even beyond Open Cape, lead to results in the short term. And I look forward to being able to sort of detail those for you. So that's the economic development piece kicking out. I just wanted also to update you on wastewater, there's been a lot of work on that.
I think we like to call it water quality maintenance these days.
I'm not into euphemisms, so it is what it is. Wastewater.
I think our focus group said that when we say wastewater, it has this whole negative connotation.
Well, there's different types of water.
It is what it is. But I spent three hours yesterday with Webner in their strategic planning session, been asked by both of those boards to sit on an advisory capacity. And that's the issue that came up, and there was a distinction there. They had two areas that Webner wanted to work on, one was water quality and one was wastewater. But they're so intertwined, it's difficult to sort of tease them apart. But as you know, the lawsuit's been filed, Conservation Law Fund, Mason Bay Coalition has filed in action, a notice of intent to us. We responded strongly, we've had a subsequent meeting, the CLF, not a lot of agreement on issues, quite frankly, going forward. They have perfected service on EPA about a month ago now. EPA turned around and asked for an extension, it's in front of Judge Wolf, Federal District Court now. And so I expect there will be a lot more traction on that litigation over the next six months. What it has done is it has opened up communication between the Commission, EPA, and DEP on things that we might do, and Senator Wolf has been involved in a lot of those discussions, too, as we look to sort of ease the burden on municipalities as they move towards considering compliance and improving the water quality in the degraded estuaries and bayments.
If I may, this morning I was listening to NPR, I was getting ready, and they were speaking about Florida. And Florida has a legal entity, sort of like the CLF, only it's called something more local, to the state of Florida. And they filed, they were pushing the state of Florida to look after their Everglades, and they were saying that they've been delinquent in addressing that problem. They brought it to the courts, and the courts have found Florida in, you know, they filed against them, and now they are up against it. So I think that...
Yeah, I read that online this morning, and it's surprising. But if you have been following EPA's track record in Chesapeake Bay, and most recently in Lake Champlain, and then you look at the Florida Everglades decision, they are moving towards enforcement on these issues where they have backed up in the past, so...
So I just thought it was another good indicator, it's another indicator that...
If you look at sort of their track record, even going back 25 years of the Boston Harbor cleanup, but they don't like to be a defendant in an environmental case. And so this is all of great concern to me. I mean, the thing that concerned me most was meeting with the EPA, the U.S. Department of Justice, and then having EPA tell me on the way out that if it gets, once it gets in front of the judge, the DOJ is making the call. So I think the last thing we want as a region is the U.S. Department of Justice designing wastewater system.
Well, I think we talked about this a lot, and I think evidence of a closer communication collaboration with the state DEP was evident in Sonny Marsh, you know, dedication yesterday.
Right.
And it was, it was a pleasure to see the people from the state come down and recognize the, you know, the, let's say, the cooperation and continued work that we're doing together. The Everglades issue is one of, they were draining water out of the swamp, pretty much.
Yeah, it's not, it's not similar, it's not a nutrient loading issue like we have out here. What it is, it's sort of a change in direction with EPA's enforcement strategies.
You know, what I wanted to touch on.
That I think is a little bit...
What's the technicality?
Some cause of concern. So we're watching all of that, but we're staying specific to what we're doing here. The state has a new Commissioner of Department of Environmental Protection, Ken Kimmel, and a new Secretary, Secretary Sullivan of Energy and Environment. We had an opportunity to meet with them, Senator Wolf, several weeks back. I think they're going to be tremendous partners and really helpful to us as we try to address some of these issues here. And when I addressed the researchers at MBL a month ago, you know, I was trying to hit these researchers, they love to get the federal grants and, you know, play around with test tubes and their pure research. I was trying to say, you have to make a commitment to take this knowledge base that you have and your expertise and point it in the direction of a problem that we have.
Paul, Paul, I was speaking as a researcher, you know, back in the day. It's about going down a road and seeing where it leads. Engineers are supposed to build stuff.
Yeah, well, that, that was the nature of the discussion. But it's a great discussion to have, the researchers seem to be engaged, they're intrigued by the problem. They have a certain amount of knowledge base and some expertise, and I think they are interested in moving in the applied direction. The other thing that is becoming clear is that when you're looking at a $3 billion price tag for a conventional approach to wastewater that we simply can't afford, that regulation often stifles innovation. It forces us to be overly conservative in the estimates that we make and the capital projects that we build. And so as part, as the litigation moves on, we have to be able to open up that space with regulators. And that's why relationship with the state and the feds is important, open up that space to allow us to be a testbed and to innovate here on the Cape as it relates to improving water quality moving forward. It's good for economic development, it's good for our environment. So that's, that's sort of the nature of the discussions that we're having on the wastewater side.
There is a piece on changing the paradigm that we've done, I think fairly successfully, of changing it to planning supported by regulation. I wanted to ask if you'd made any progress on this 9.7 million project that the state is proposing for regional development.
Yeah, it's a, it's a competitive grant program. It was in House One, it's in the House budget, and I expect that it will probably, I'm not going to say it's going to be in the Senate budget, but it's a good Senate that's been in both the governor's budget and the House budget. So expect that to come forward. I expect us to be extraordinarily competitive for that 19, for that 9.7 million. And it came up specifically in a conversation I had with Senator Wolf, Secretary Sullivan, and Commissioner Kimmel. So we're looking at that specifically. And the Mass Estuaries project, for example, a lot of people lose sight of the fact that that's a $12 million investment. You know, half of it from the state, half of it from you and UMass. And what that has done, every single town has the ability to go out and get their own science if they choose to, but this is science that's been done for them. And these are specifically tailored TM, Total Maximum Daily Limits and Loads in these estuaries. That will allow us to build less infrastructure, not more. Without those TMDLs established, if enforcement came, we'd be looking at a much more conservative regulatory approach and a much higher price tag. So that's been a significant cost savings for the town, I think that that's lost in the debate a lot. The next thing that the towns need is a regional buildup. So I think that's the thing that holds towns back from their planning. So if we can get a science database and a land use database, and I think that that's a role that the Commission could help in, that the county can help in, is establishing this regional land use database, this regional buildup. So we're working, and I think that might be one of the areas that provide for that 9.7. So we mentioned that.
And in that whole, in that whole area, I have a continuing concern with regard to the cooperation, collaboration within county government.
Yes.
And I'm hoping that, you know, we're continuing to look at that. I know that for the six years that I was on the Cape Cod Commission, that that was a great concern of mine, and I, and I hope that it's a concern of yours as well.
It is, and, you know, county health has been an important partner in that, and it will be in some of the technology transfer going over in the IA system, testbed out at the military reservation. And we've actually had an opportunity to work much more closely with the collaborative on a couple of economic development issues related to aquaculture that have, are, we'll have more to talk about in the future, but there's some interesting connections that are happening moving forward there. So the wastewater issue continues to move forward. The watershed tour that we started last October has gotten some traction, so we're getting a lot more requests from Boards of Selectmen, Boards of Health, state agencies, the Commissioner or the VP Commissioner, has requested that we make the presentation to them. We made the presentation to the Cape delegation, Senate President's Office at her request week before last. So we're trying to, we're out there educating, which is really our main role on this, besides our regulatory role of looking at conference wastewater management plans and developments of regional impact. So we have, in the process of revamping that watershed tour and that presentation to make what is, I think, an excellent presentation even better, we're going to be profiling that at the economic summit, too, on May 9th and 10th. So that's wastewater and economic development.
What about the GSD?
Oh, that's right, we were at Harvard last week to make the wastewater presentation up there, the Graduate School of Design. At EPA's invitation, we were invited to participate with the Harvard Graduate School of Design. And they have a program now where they're looking at creating what is sort of the LEED certification for building, only LEED for a certification process for infrastructure projects. And so the Cape, the wastewater issue on the Cape has been selected as one of five projects nationally to look at as part of that infrastructure. So they asked us to come up and make that presentation last week.
Is there any money attached to that?
Not directly, but when you look at the money that funds the program at the GSD, it opens up the possibility of new funders to come down and support some of the efforts that we do. I think we made a very strong presentation, and it was, it was well received.
If I, I think it's just, it's just a comment, I mean, it makes perfect sense because there is no infrastructure. So for graduate schools, you know, students with design, it's not as though you're just looking at what's there and what, how can we make this more efficient, more modern? You can say, you know, this is a blank slate, this is the problem. I think it's a, I think it's great that they invited you up there, and I think it's a great opportunity that could hopefully evolve into a very good partnership.
It's what makes us different. I mean, the Senate President's appointed you to the statewide Water Infrastructure Committee, and our problem down here is so much different than most of the rest of the state. Because 85% of the households here are not on a sort of centralized collection system at all.
Right.
So we have no infrastructure, and that's why the costs are going to be multiples more than the greater Boston area when they went through the Boston Harbor cleanup 25 years ago. If we're forced to go down this conventional regulatory enforcement path.
In Harwich, they did have, they were rolling out some of the, you know, some of the planning activity. David Young, who I think you know from CDM, you know, was there, you know, talking about, you know, some of the issues with regard to locating sites within Harwich. And I think that's a problem that I think we need to look at, as you look at some of these mapping projects, is identifying areas that were, you know, that are appropriate for citing, say, support to some of these cluster systems.
And I think that ties into the, to the effort at trying to put together a regional buildup and land use analysis, to create a regional database that all the towns can look at, so they'll know not only what's happening in Harwich, but what's happening in Chatham, too. So that's all moving forward on the wastewater side. So we'll be back on the road with the watershed tour next month, right after the economic summit. So we're not every night.
Yeah, that would be great.
The four-point plan, we did get that...
Yes.
I did get that put together with Scott Michaud and a copy that's over there right now.
Yes, we have that.
So hopefully you'll be able to get that archived, that, and put that on you on the webpage.
Yeah, the Commissioner did an interview, public access interview with Scott Michaud from Cape Cod Commission on the four-point plan for NSTAR.
The answer, okay.
So we're going to put that up so people that have that can be available.
It incorporates the PowerPoint presentation that we...
Yeah, that was very good.
Yes.
So we can continue on the NSTAR program, that none of those components have been funded yet, but we've made some progress with NSTAR in talking about some alternatives underneath the rights of way to use this sort of pilot programs. And so we'll have, we'll have more to report on that as we go through the summer.
Where is the delegation? I mean, I know that we've, we've talked to them in person about what we would, I mean, I know that the Commission has even put a request that we do need funding. Is there access to their, you know, can they assist us in even working with DAR? I have not yet heard anything back, other than some legislation that Representative Turner is thinking about. I think he sent it to both you and I, and I have not really weighed in on that yet. I'm not sure where that is, but I think he's looking for some assistance in the language. They did file it finally?
That's one with Sarah Peake.
The way it was? Well, it was with Kleon, and after we had a discussion with them, I said, you know, we'd be willing to work with you, because he said, do we want it to, do we want to ask for more, like, the power to regulate given to the towns or to the region? And I said, I'm not even sure if you can get the power to regulate so much as to give more, some sort of more authority and direction, either from the regional level, and then we, I said, you know, if you want to work with someone on the Commission or here, we can work with it.
The delegation is doing what they believe is appropriate, and, but there's no money attached to that to support our four-point plan. So we've been working with other private nonprofits to try to find additional money to support our efforts there, and I think we'll be successful.
There is a, there is a concern that I have, is that although all of the towns in the Cape have signed on to a new spray...
Yeah.
I haven't seen any activity in the individual towns with regard to having hearings with the butters as to what their concerns are, and any, any evidence of what I'd call town-generated plans or programs with regard to issues that they have in concern. I know that Green Cape had suggested a particular solution, but I hadn't heard any, you know, any indication from individual communities that said that they would support that.
Green Cape has a program on the Friendly Lawns coming up in Falmouth at the Universalist Church. I think it's not this Sunday, but the following, I'm not, within the next 10 days.
Following?
Yeah, which day is it?
It's the...
Seventh?
Eighth.
Eighth. Yeah, so, and that's what we, we had talked with them about that, and they said that they would really consider doing it, and they are. I think that's very good.
No, and the education and outreach piece, we expect to work with them pretty closely on developing a plan for that to go forward. There's a lot of good best management practices out there that we have to inform. I think this has been an educational process for a lot of the towns. A lot of them sort of assume that they weren't, that they were green when they really weren't. So that's good.
Well, what brings up an important issue for me is that we could create subregions that are green, that incorporate two or three towns together.
Sure.
Whereas we've gotten resistance, you know, at the state because they wanted individual communities to, you know, to be qualified. I felt that this was missing an opportunity, especially with the intent that the feds had with regard to creating green communities. And I hope that it's part of your responsibility as, you know, in planning, that you continue to, let's say, to support that idea, and perhaps we can get some traction.
Yeah, I mean, the county, not just the Commission, but other county sister agencies went to Secretary three years ago to advocate for regional designation. There's been some change in personnel up there now, so perhaps that suggestion would be received differently.
Well, I'm hoping that this 9.7 billion that they've been talking about for regional programs might be a vehicle that could be used, you know, for part of that, because I think that does provide a benefit for, let's say, for, let's say, for several communities who do not qualify in their own, but would qualify if they could be in coalition with a couple others. Do you have any other questions?
I have a question about the summit coming up, on the 9th. Is, is the registration very robust at this point?
Yes.
And it is, that's good. And what are some of the outcomes that you expect that could happen?
Well...
That would lead us in some other directions or, or the directions that you would hope that we would go in?
The registration has been robust, and there's a maximum capacity from a lot of these things, of about 220 people or something like that. So I would encourage people that are interested to go online and register and to get there. The outcomes, I think, are going to be numerous. I think every co-sponsor has a particular piece that they want to get out of it. Like the Commission, we have our annual SEDs update piece that's going to come up, that's going to be informed by that. Open Cape is there to really inform, to continue to inform municipalities about what this means for them, this middle mile program. IBM is going to be there to begin the discussion about partners in this Smarter Cape Initiative, how we can use the information that we collect now to be smarter, to build less infrastructure, not more infrastructure, and to build a more sustainable Cape Cod long-term. So I think that there are a number of potential outcomes, but specifically, there's been discussion among the partners now about how we might follow through. So we will expect that there will be some outcomes from the summit. And then we want to put in place a six-month plan to follow that implementation, so it's not just a big meeting where everyone gets charged up and then goes away. We want to be able to follow through with a lot of what comes out of the summit. And I think there could be some announcements, you know, I think there might be sort of the discussion about the creation of the Center for Innovation, Commissioner...
Are you keeping us all surprised, Boris?
No, part of it is because some of these people haven't agreed to come. But, but other state policymakers are looking at this as an avenue maybe to make an announcement or two about different things, so...
Excellent.
So, yeah, so they're surprised.
So be there, R, be square. I know. Can't create that.
That's right.
You have any other questions?
Well, there's...
You know, I thought, I just wanted to go back to our original purpose today, and really, we call it an evaluation, but we think that we, having a mid-year review or opportunity to talk with you, because this really relates to goals and accomplishments. And it isn't so much about, do we like you or not like you, or did you do something?
It's all about personality.
No, it's not, yes, it's not about...
I'm in rough shape then, though.
No. So it's really all about, you know, you being on track with the, with the Commission and the efforts of the Commission and your goals, your personal goals, as well as the goals of the Commission. And it's really good to do this, to see where you are. And we want to do this with our own county people on the other side, so does the administrator and assistant administrator.
Yes, we're going to show them the film so that they'll know what they expect and what to do, this film, so that when their review comes up...
This is not necessarily a formal process, and there's so much that we do...
Right, right.
No, this is not...
I could come every week, I think, and give you a piece of what we're doing.
I'd always welcome you, President.
Yes.
As you know.
I do, I do. I appreciate that. But we're, we've done a lot, I mean, the Ocean DC PC is moving forward, the Policy Committee, we came up with a map last week. The State Ocean Advisory Committee met last Friday for the first time in several months. So we expect that we'll have regs for appropriately scaled offshore wind in late summer.
And that was all done with the work of those Boards of Selectmen from each town?
Yeah, first time we used a policy committee, where we've got members of Boards of Selectmen to come in and really get into the substance upfront, and then have those recommendations forward to the Subcommittee of the Commissions, who have never done that before. And now that the wind standards are in place, we're going to use a similar process to put together an advisory committee that will inform the technical bulletin and development that will be forward. And I think it's great, it's, it's an effort to really, at consensus building, that I think isn't done often enough.
No, I think it's great that it worked.
The other piece, I think, too, that's good, is to, is to more formalize relationships with the scientific institutions, HUe and MBL. I mean, they've been there, and sometimes scientists volunteer their time to work on certain projects, but I think to have a more formal relationship with them. And when, in this ZOLUS building project that they're doing, which is the ocean, ocean management, ocean engineering, whatever it is, it's, that should, I think that could be, or some of that information could be helpful in the projects that the county... projects that the county has, like that you're moving forward with the water and moisture. I mean, there must be some way of collaborating with them on that as well.
Now, we have worked pretty closely with them, and there are some concepts that probably will come out of the economic center, how we can work even more closely with them, and how we can use institutions of higher learning that aren't even on the Cape to sort of use their expertise here.
Like MIT?
MIT and Brown are two that are interested in doing a lot of work in the water space right now. Brown has a really interesting project in Singapore they're doing.
Really?
Yeah. So that's, we'll be along. The other thing I just mentioned is the mass military reservation. All the commanders came in and met with me last month, and I think we're getting ready in the, over the next 12 months, what we'll do is probably go back and revisit the master plan for the base. We expect probably some more discussion about BRAC. And so there's been some significant investment made out there, and we want to make sure, especially to the extent that we're, there are public-private partnerships, and we're investing in things that are important to our economic development, that we can protect that. But there's also, I think, the potential for an expanded role for the county out there in that wastewater facility and in the IA facility, to really become this sort of testbed for some of these new technologies. And so...
If we expand our involvement out there, that would protect us against the effect of a BRAC.
You got it.
Well, they have, they have reinstituted their citizen advisory committee, and I think you're representing the Commissioners.
I'm very excited about that.
I'm representing the Town of Falmouth, and you're on...
So I think there's going to be a lot more discussion.
So you've triangulated them?
Yeah.
You know, it was interesting, even being at Webner yesterday, when you look at the Cape, and then you look at the National Seashore, the mass military reservation, and you look at the Waco Bay, you know, National Estream Research Reserve. Yeah, the federal government has a big stake in the Cape, and I think this ties into our wastewater discussion. I mean, this really, they're here because this is a national treasure, but they've got to be a partner in helping us restore the water quality of our estuaries and invasions.
Well, Noah did speak to, you know, speak to their interest in supporting that, at least at Stony Marsh, and I would hope that wasn't just rhetoric for you.
No, I think there's, from the federal EPA, and they were at the GSD presentation we made last week, they've been really helpful. And I see them as being, the EPA is going to be a partner in helping us address this issue, as is DEP and the Department of Energy and Environmental Health Affairs.
And USDA?
And USDA, the USDA Administrator made a little whistle-stop tour here a couple of weeks ago, and I was in Boston, so Patty met with the Administrator, and they are a partner, too. They, as you know, were one of the, they gave Chatham a $20 million grant for their wastewater project.
Oh.
No.
So Secretary Salazar didn't stop by when he was passing through?
When you're talking about, you know, these infrastructure issues with regard to water quality, remember that the Corps of Engineers has a significant influence with regard to waterways and waterway management.
Yeah.
And some of us are very concerned about the narrowing down of what represents a navigable waterway, and is that including irrigation ditches and things like that?
Right.
But I think that we need to be in contact with them, both for the upper Cape planning that I hope is still going on.
It is. And that, you know, I've left out more than I've included today, but we have a much better and improved relationship with the Army Corps. A lot of discussion about the bridges, but that has expanded to discussions in both Yarmouth and Dennis about rail bridges and bike paths, and how we're going to sort of deal with that there, because the Corps is involved in the Bass River pretty heavily. And so it's a combination project between the Army Corps and Mass DOT to take that bridge out. So somebody's got to put the bridge back if you want, you know, bikes don't float, so we're going to get them across somehow. So we're working on that. And then the final thing I would say is we continue to work with individual communities, with our reset team. And the reset team is now aimed at the Town of Bourne, and is sort of working in Bourne, which has been, you know, a community where the Commission hasn't had such a stellar reputation at times. But there is so much stuff going on in Bourne. Now, we have a major DRI project, that's a wind project on the north side, but that is also on a parcel that includes a green tech park that they want to develop. We've got a Buzzards Bay area where there's still been a lot of study and planning done, and National Marine Life Center there. And then we've just got a land use vision map on the north side, but we're running a land use vision map on the south side. There are two businesses on the south side in Bourne that are those year-round high-tech. One of them is a HOE spin-off, the other is the two-second home, former second homeowners up here who started the business. It's a great business. And so you will see in Bourne by the end of the calendar year, a growth incentive zone, a land use vision map with raised thresholds and industrial and sorts and trade areas that will help two businesses that are essential to the Town of Bourne, stay in Bourne on the south side.
Is this in the water recharge area in Buzzards Bay?
The growth incentive zone?
Yeah.
It's in Buzzards Bay, yeah.
Okay. Because one of the concerns that, you know, that we were looking at as far as having that as a terminus interconnect for a potential intermodal site was the parking, you know, they had to get provided. And, you know, the issue was that the places where they were identifying for, let's say, for parking and for accessing were privately owned, and there needed to be some, let's say, some thinking about how do you provide that place where you can, you know, you can put your vehicle?
Yeah, Town of Bourne's done some pretty good planning down there, so I'm confident we can get that growth incentive zone down. And they've got a couple of people that want to spend some money down there and build some things. So I think that that growth incentive zone's going to work. The green tech park could fit into this water tech collaboration. And then the land use vision map on the south side with the raised thresholds, Bourne may be, Dennis might beat them, but Bourne may be the first one to raise thresholds based on land use vision map. And then on top of that, we have put a lot of staff effort to support their wastewater deliberations, especially on the north side. They had Ty and Bond did a great report just to set them up on that. There's a lot more specific work that needs to be done before they're ready to go to Conference of Waste Partnership Plan. But on the north side, they're looking at a reasonably sized facility that would facilitate some economic growth and increase, give a net environmental benefit out there at the same time. So we're following that project through, and it's also a project where a public-private partnership is being, may be one of the potential options. So it gives us a chance to, in a very specific way, but in a smaller way, start to vet some of these issues that other towns are going to deal with as we move towards remediating water quality issues.
I have one other question, and I hate to bring it up in some ways, but you were saying that the towns had lots of questions about wastewater, water, solid waste, and wind. And we will be signing our standards here, so before you feel it's time for you to leave the room or something, is there any questions or anything that we, while we have Paul here?
While you're here, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Do you?
No, my questions were answered.
Yeah, but I just thought that since we didn't touch...
Paul addressed my questions at the very beginning of the meeting when you responded to the lady.
Yes.
Tell me your name again, in the back, behind you.
Yes, you.
Yeah, from Yarmouth.
Janice Luedo.
Janice Luedo, right.
Yes, when you answer her questions, what the impact is of voting the standards and not voting the thresholds.
Yeah, and I would just say that the action by the Assembly to approve the standards and send the thresholds back, I think the threshold came back mainly because 65 feet is going to catch every wind turbine. And we have to put it in the context of other things that we regulate, like cell towers and other issues, and their relationship to the average tree canopy. To go beyond that, there's really no scientific basis. It's really a political decision. And so I think that decision is more appropriately left to the individual towns. And so what we will be doing over the next few months is developing an ordinance by which the towns can have a certified local bylaw consistent with the way that we deal with certification of local comprehensive plans and certification of development agreements. We have a model bylaw for that. That will allow the towns to moderate that. And it will also take into account the fact that if it is tree canopy that we're sort of aiming for, it's different in Truro than it is in Bourne. And there's a different sensitivity. And so that will start internal debates among the towns, and towns that want to moderate that 65-foot limit will roll up their sleeves and they'll do the process. There are other towns that don't. They want, they would want every project to come to the Commission. They've got limited resources. They don't want to review wind turbines. So I think it's a great sort of balance, and so we'll be working on a model bylaw that will produce that ordinance, that will come back at some point in time in the future to the Assembly. Same time, we'll be working on a technical bulletin, first time that we will put a citizens advisory committee together to monitor the construction of that technical bulletin. The other issue is that the Department of Environmental Protection and Department of Health are working on a joint sort of literature survey about noise impacts of wind turbines. So I think we're in a good position where all of this can happen simultaneously and cooperatively to put us in a much better position six months down the road than we are now.
If you have any further questions, I had some questions.
I do have one, but that's okay. You go ahead. No longer on your lines. Mine is unrelated to the topics.
Okay. I continue to have a concern about the language with regard to two areas, and this has more to do with what is in front of me as opposed to what is intended. And the first one is with regard to the noise regulation or the suggestion of it, because the state has said that before they would come up with a standard, they have to develop a methodology with regard to how it would be measured.
Right.
And that is in process. The idea that I would, I am not comfortable, or not, to sign a regulation that says that you're going to have a report from a consultant that's hired by an applicant, and a consultant that is paid for by an applicant that is working for the Cape Cod Commission. I find that, and this is a personal bias, because I worked in the measurement of high intensity and impact noise for, you know, for seven years. And there's no, there's no way during that period of time that we were able to use a simulation to make a measurement that could be replicated on what I would call an actual installation. So I find that, you know, I find that to be not, if it's intended to be a regulation, that that particular piece, since we're only allowed to vote it up or down, continues to be problematic. And although, you know, I'm sure you have the best of intentions with regard to addressing a technical bulletin, the fact that the state is contemplating investing significant money in doing that, I feel that I would want to wait until that money was spent, and we saw that, before I would, you know, would support the whole of that. The second part has to do with, there is a process at the Cape Cod Commission with regard to the granting of a waiver. In my recollection, if a, if the Cape Cod Commission had approved a, an applicant's, let's say, request for, you know, let's say, for a permit, and it was granted, if the applicant then required a waiver, there was a process, I'm sure, and I believe it's still in place, that this would come back to the Commission, Cape Cod Commission as a whole, and would go through a process, at least at the executive committee level, representing members. So I took some exception to the language that said that you would be the person that, and to me, it is an appearance issue. And although I have no, I have no question with regard to your integrity, that does suggest an area where somewhere in the future, if this were to stand, there'd always be that question with regard to, how do you take a process that was initiated by a vote of representatives of a community, and then a process for, let's say, for decommissioning can be granted a waiver by essentially an employee? So those are the two, you know, there are other areas. I have a great concern that the investment by developers with regard to the uncertainties that, you know, that are suggested by that, you know, would be a deterrent to the continued development of that. But I just think it would be easier to address those, since we only have a way of voting them up or down, and then bringing them back with those things corrected, rather than going with what I would call a patchwork on, okay, we'll correct this later, we'll address this later, when the answers to one appear to be on the horizon, and the answer to the other is already incorporated in the ways that, you know, the Cape Cod Commission has been organized to operate. So, you know, that's where I stand on that.
No, I hear that, and I understand where you're coming from on both those issues. I would respond on the decommissioning language by saying the reason the executive director is allowed to sort of extend the period that a turbine can remain not operational and not trigger the standard that would require them to decommission it was to provide flexibility. It was consistent with the way that a development of regional impact decision that is, has to change and goes to a minor modification one is done by the signature of the executive director. So it's a way to expedite that process. So it was actually an intention to provide flexibility, so that people that finance these projects wouldn't see them as completely inflexible. Having said that, I think there is enough flexibility as drafted. We've talked to some of our sister agencies about language that would be more acceptable to them. We have agreed on that, and so we will be filing, putting that in front of the regulatory committee next week to amend that particular piece that's in front of you. As to sort of working out all the kinks before, you know, I would just, I would leave it at this, saying, given my experience in the process between November and now, I think there was a serious question as to whether the Cape Cod Commission was ever going to have the authority to regulate or have standards on the books. And without those standards on the books, without that jurisdictional grant, it didn't seem to be a prudent use of public money to go through the process of trying to develop a technical bulletin and hire people and get the money, if we weren't going to be part of it. And I think if we weren't going to be part of that discussion, that's appropriate. I mean, that could be one way that it went down. So that's why the standards are there and the technical bulletin will follow, and the decommissioning language will be modeled.
And there was some concern that I had about, and I guess it was, I had viewed the noise regulation as being an invitation to litigation because of that conflict. And we've talked about this before.
Yeah, and, you know, we deal with sort of this situation with cell towers now, where the cell tower developer pays the commission, we hire a consultant, the consultant works for us, and it's a way to interject some objectivity. I have been less than satisfied in some of the noise studies that I've seen. So I think that, and I think the state recognizes this, too. And so I think that we need to be more diligent in what we're requiring as a component of these noise studies and the kind of review that they go through. I think the Vineyard is engaged in a different, more specific upfront approach with measuring decibel levels. We'll look at that. But we're not going to do this in a vacuum, and in fact, we're going to ask the state, and they have signaled some interest in participating in our process. So I don't expect that we're going to get out in front of the state or we're going to be behind the state. I think we're going to work shoulder to shoulder to try to come up with some standards.
And if I just may comment on hearing studies and tests, I mean, what was, you know, experience of, your experience in direct involvement was, you know, not just recent. And technologies have changed in even measuring these things. So I do think that if they've decided to go forward and put all of their, you know, their expertise on the subject, they will be able to come up with some viable measurements that we're not able to be...
I am sensitive to Bill's concern about the methodology and the ability to do this in a way that is unquestionable. But that, but we do, there is discretion out there, and that's what the standards are for. So what the best that we can do is come up with a technical bulletin that gives a scientific basis to exercise discretion.
Right.
And I think we can be successful with that, I really.
I have reservations about that, because I don't believe we have the resources to develop what I would call a, let's say, a significant, defendable, bulletproof, if you will, standard. And I have one other thing. Although the experience that I, you know, that I had with regard to this matter is from the past, what I did discover at that time was that there is a subjective nature with regard to discrimination. You can focus, in this particular instance, we were sending discreet signals, and at different times, on different days, the subjects would hear it and not hear it, and there were considerable, you know, say, what I call a very noisy environment, and how to do that, since I was working, you know, at that time for the Department of Army, working on military equipment. But at the same time, because there is such a subjective nature with regard to being able to, let's say, discriminate among, let's say, among different sounds, and because I, and I've seen the evidence since then in industrial situations where you can simulate what actually goes on in any kind of an environment, and that's why I take exception to it, and I, just in person. No, there's no...
There's no more comment, I'm sorry.
I do have...
No questions either? No questions?
No questions.
The other question I have, too, is, you mentioned earlier that the Assembly voted the standards but not the thresholds.
Yes.
The standards allow a town, a board, certain permitting boards or certain boards within a town to request a DRI.
Yes.
Based on their authority to do that. If the thresholds, when the thresholds are also in place, does that say... If the thresholds, when the thresholds are also in place, does that same opportunity still exist?
It does. Yeah, so even if a town were to have a model bylaw that was adopted and raised the height limit to 150 feet, if they had, you know, something that was under that threshold that they wanted to send, they could still send it as a discretion at the overall.
Okay.
I mean, that always exists. And, you know, and I think that that's a good place for us to be in right now. Towns that want help from a regional review, it's available to them now, I think that's important.
I just wish that they had reached out more for that and not, you know, and not had to say. There is an, there has always been an opportunity, and I think that as far as putting a cap on what we've been talking about, perhaps the most important regional service that the county provides is the Cape Cod Commission and their effective planning and regulatory, you know, support. And that I'm very happy with, you know, with you bringing us all to date today. And I would say that, you know, that the confidence that we've always had in what you're doing has been, you know, certainly been.
So I have a question for Patty, not for you. I want to ask Patty how Paul keeps so many balls in the air at one time and yet allows them to drop successfully and in a timely way. So how does that happen?
I should be answering that question, because she catches them all.
I mean, just listening to the whole conversation today, I mean, you think of all, of all the things that are going on. I mean, you have to be able to keep them there and then bring them down when they're ready, but not let them stay up there forever.
It's got the staff very busy, I can tell you.
Is that how it works?
That's a good thing, that's job security.
Right.
But it is, it was really the benefit of having, and the staff that we have at the Cape Cod Commission is a first-class staff, and, you know, they can keep a lot of balls in the air.
Right, and you've also heard some very positive comments about your staff here today, so I think that that's a compliment to them and to you, and I think that's, that's great that that was stated, and I think we agree.
Okay, get on the six months and then we'll talk.
Yeah, we'll see you in six months. You better get everybody here again then.
Okay, did you have anything to take away?
No, just two, in that I would like to come back on a more regular basis, so I would like to do this, a report on the sets update after the ninth and the tenth. And then I'd like to come back and show you the wastewater presentation again, too.
Right, and in the meantime, when, sometime in July or August, you know, we talked about putting that, we'll do the same thing I did for Squad.
Yeah.
We'll put something together, and then we can put it on the archive.
Good, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, you're very much.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman.
With that.
Mr. Chairman.
Pause for a tape check.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're back.
All right, I will move the summary of actions.
I take exception to number two on the summary of actions. The vote to approve ordinance 11-05 for the RPP amendment, I do not intend to vote for that.
Well, then we'll take that separately. We'll vote items one through 27, with the exception of two, which will, that would be my motion, to vote one through seven, but 27 without two.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And you polled, and you've sent it as a vote. Now, on item number two, you've heard what my, what my concerns are with regard to this, and I.
First, let's make the motion.
I make the motion that we, that we move item number two and approve it.
Forwarded back.
And forward it back to the commission, signed, to put it in effect, ordinance 11-05 for the RFP amendment concerning wind.
I'll second.
All right, is there, do you have any more discussion?
What, do you?
No.
Well, I do, and I think I've stated what my concerns are. We are voting on something that's in front of us, not something that is intended to be corrected at a later time. I take, I have a great concern about signing something that shows that we're approving what is in front of us, rather than what we, what we're hoping will, you know, will come out of it. And having said that, there is much in that amendment that, you know, that I have no problem with, and I think makes some progress with regard to this, and there's much more that I think, you know, is a, is an issue. I had brought up the fact that the other agencies that are involved with regard to this matter have not signed on to this, you know, to this ordinance.
Except for a lot of other agencies.
The Cape Light Contact and the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op have not signed on, but they have not, you know, have not signed on as supporting this. And I have my own reasons, which I, you know, which I've stated. I think that this is, that since we can only vote it up or down and cannot amend it, I've always felt that that was a flaw in this whole process, because if there were an opportunity for either the Assembly or us to provide an amendment to these things, we could straighten this out at this time. But under the rules and under the, under the Cape Cod Commission Act, we only have the opportunity to vote on what is in front of us. What is in front of us, in my opinion, is flawed for the reasons that I've suggested, and, you know, that's where I am on that.
Well, I, my feeling about it is, is that we're sending over the performance standards and not the thresholds. And I think the thresholds are going to make a lot of difference, and I think there'll be a lot more testimony on the thresholds. But I also think the commission understands, just from listening to Paul and having conversation with him, understands that as they go forward with this and they develop the technical bulletin, there may well be some changes to these standards. I don't know what they are, but I have confidence in the commission that they're going to come up with a final public policy and public process that I think will benefit the Cape. So I, and I know what you're referring to. I'm concerned about the decommissioning. I think that's a really important issue because it appears that financial institutions may not want to finance projects, wind projects, based on that language and the decommissioning. But I think that since the, since last November, there's everything, there is new information coming out all the time related to this, and I think the Cape Cod Commission is going to, I just have enough confidence in them that they will take these into consideration and work with them as they arise. So, and I think it's time to get the process started, I really do.
I absolutely agree. Even yesterday, Dennis voted against it. So far, as it stands, with no standards, nothing's really happening. I think that this is the first process, and he cannot, as he stated, it takes time and money and investment in consultants. Helping a technical advisory board go forward and to advise them, and he's not going to do that, nor is it prudent to do that if they're not, if they're not sure that they're going to be part of the process. I do think that the public is looking forward to be part in that process. I think it will be, it will come out the way the ocean management plan did, that process. Whoever thought 15 boards of, you know, members of boards of selectmen could come together and agree on what's going to happen out in the ocean and come to that agreement? I think it's the only honest, transparent way to do it, so therefore I support it as well.
And the other thing, too, I think we understand as a county government and also the Cape Cod Commission being part of that, that you don't create public policy without the input of the public. I mean, it's, it's just critical to having public policy that works, is to have that input.
And you can't let particular interests overshadow that.
I think we really do have to go forward. So I'm ready to vote.
I am ready to vote, too.
Do you want to follow vote?
Well, I guess it does.
All in favor was, was two.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And I am against.
Okay. So we can sign, is there?
I couldn't care less.
I know. Voting on that today.
Let's see you back here.
Yes, in a couple of years.
Did you want to make a report?
Oh, yes, I want to make a report on the Lyme disease committee. As you know, we've lost, we have a new epidemiologist.
Yes.
And his name is, it's here, I saw it.
Larry Dapsis.
Larry Dapsis, Larry Dapsis. And he, he is now a part of the Lyme disease committee. Brendan Woland Lesser came back and took over the first meeting. We've lost a number of members, and actually, some of the members that are there, it's not really anymore a constituted committee, and it needs to be reconstituted. So they have asked if we would send out, due to our usual announcement, we want to fill the positions on the Lyme disease committee, and we are seeking applications for membership of the COVID group one. So I think if we could agree to do that, we can ask Mark to send out the notice that we are seeking application for membership on the Lyme disease committee.
I think that Lyme disease is a very important issue, personally, and the fact that I see Lyme ticks all over.
Oh, yeah, and the tick season is off to a big start. So I will move that we advertise for openings on the Lyme disease committee and ask that they be advertised.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. That's it.
Okay, did you have anything to report?
I would just like to ask, why is it looking like that you're authorizing my smarter Kate? Did you guys pay?
We agreed to vote that we would pay for us at the.
Right. Oh, the other one, so this is me.
In a sense, we had to vote to you.
So you already voted for you two, okay. All right, so that's yours.
You weren't here, so we had to vote in your place.
So it doesn't have my signature on it, so I don't have to sign my own.
We figured you would want to do that.
Yes, I did. I'm just wondering why I didn't get my list.
Did you have any?
Yes, I just wanted to state that there is a meeting held, the Regional Network put together a meeting Monday morning in response to the motel situation in Yarmouth.
What motel situation?
You know, Yarmouth has motels that house people who are.
Homeless.
Well, they're homeless, they're at risk, they've been placed there sometimes on a temporary basis, and, you know, a week goes into a month, and, you know, there's a long history to this, but, you know, the zoning, the bylaw in Yarmouth changed because there was too many motel rooms to stop development of that, which hindered their renovation, being able to renovate, having a deterioration of motels, which became only attractive to people who were maybe having vouchers and rental vouchers and this sort of thing. So now with their revitalization plan, they are looking to either, you know, have those motels changed to real housing with a component of affordable housing, or to become a viable business, and they're really trying to, you know, save themselves because Yarmouth isn't a bad way. So I appreciate everything that they've done and the direction that they're trying to go into. Unfortunately, there's 135 units occupied by people who have really nowhere to go. This came about, in the papers about five, six weeks ago, when it was on the front page, and there was this big uproar, all these people are going to be thrown out. I spoke to the Board of Selectmen, several of them, that morning in Yarmouth, and we had Mary Wagon, Wagon come, I'm always saying her name wrong, Wagon come to speak to us. So Yarmouth has been trying to be very responsible. They have a housing trust authority, they have some money put aside for these people and to help them with their first, last, and a month's rent and to make sure they're placed. So as the County Regional Network, we offered our assistance, and on May 5th, in Yarmouth, at, I believe, the Mattakee School, but people should check that exact location, from 9:00 to, I think, 1:00 in the morning, there was going to be a help fair where all of the different agencies, Barnstable, HAC, Duffy, CHC, Food Pantries, all of the different human services, Falmouth Housing Authority, a lot of different housing authorities, will be there to take people's information, to do assessments, to see how we can best place them and get the process going so that these people are not at risk and just tossed out onto the street. And then, so I guess through the week I was gone, there was this uproar that this was not in the state of an appeal. The gentleman who owns the motel does not want this to happen, so he put in an appeal which gave us even more lead time, like it could probably be a year before this happens. It's, I thought it was denied, the appeal, and that May 3rd was the imminent date. So Monday, instead of going to Stony Brook, which would have been a lovely afternoon because it was a beautiful day, over in Brewster, I, Beth Albert and I went from meeting, going to the West Yarmouth Lodge to look at the rooms and to see what this is like, an on-site place. We then met with the chief of police, we then met with the chamber, we then spoke indirectly to the town manager, all of whom said, there's nothing going to happen on May 3rd. You have your help fair, and we are willing to go through this.
Help, help.
So it's called a help, not help fair, help fair. And that help fair is the human service agencies coming in to do assessments to properly place and screen and triage or whatever it is that's going to be needed. It was very enlightening to be with the chief of police and to be with the chamber and to have all these different views. But the overall view is that I think Yarmouth wants to proceed in a very responsible way. I don't think we should overreact, and I think that some people say, well, you know, at the cost of some people. You know, Yarmouth is in an economically tough time, and they are really trying to revitalize themselves, and I do think that they're being considerate of those who are going to be affected and impacted. That is not taking a side, some people have accused me that I'm going over to this other side. I see the need, and I think that Beth Albert, the Regional Network, is in there trying to make sure that this all goes as smoothly as possible, and that, and even this morning, I will say, I got, they have an attorney on the other side trying to stop this from happening, and he sent me notice that it was indeed eminent that it was going to happen on the 3rd. I have forwarded that on to, I had three boards of selectmen's emails at my access, so three boards of, members of the Board of Selectmen in Yarmouth got an email from me forwarding that comment from the attorney. Also, Beth Albert got it, and Mary Wagon, who was heading up the effort, and just saying, I hope that this is not going to be the case, and that, you know, a little bit more delay time to make sure people are taken care of will be so much more beneficial than, you know, just saying, oh, we can do this now, so let's go forward. And I don't think that's their intention, so.
Bob Lawden, who was representing the, was it the, not the land trust, I guess the housing, Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes, their trust that did.
They did pass a, I thought they passed a supportive ordinance at a town meeting in Yarmouth. So I believe that, you know, that Yarmouth is, as a town is doing what they can.
They can't, I mean, they're not going to be able to solve the problem, and this is a bigger issue. I mean, it's, we can't hold up Yarmouth because now we see that these things should be done differently. We should look at this to make sure that these people are taken care of, but also anticipate that this is a problem. How are we going to best address this and not just have it be Barnstable's problem, you know, which they feel that it's all, everybody comes to them because of the services, and it overflows into Yarmouth, but it is something that we as a region should take a look at. It's not, you know, when you look at the number of homeless we have on the Cape, it has to be able to be doable, and it's something that we can all contribute to.
There's some questions that we have with regard to the day that the feds require you to make the measurement, January 26th, there was a snowstorm.
I absolutely agree.
And so one of the issues about, you know, it's going down here at 492, as a long-serving member of a housing authority, I'm glad you're doing this.
Right.
You know, people should know that the West Yarmouth Lodge is no prize, you know.
Well, we saw their best rooms, but, and we did not see the cavalier, there's several other ones. And it is, I mean, and yes, is it better than a cardboard box, these rooms? Yes, there's no doubt about it, especially in the wintertime. But there are families living in here, and is that what we are going to accept as acceptable as a people? And I don't think it is acceptable, and I think that we really do have to take this, get through this, help Yarmouth out, help these people, and really come together and say, what, we're working on the update of the 10-year plan to end homelessness or to at least, you know, keep it in check.
No, it was to end homelessness.
To end homelessness, it's very lofty, but to decrease it to its, to levels that we, that are possible. And I think that out of that, I started thinking about it more and more the last couple of days after all these conversations, and I'd like to add, you know, come up with some thoughts that I have with that process.
People should understand that if those housing units are not available, where are these people going to go?
I agree. And it's affordable housing, so how are we going to accomplish it? Every town is not compliant with their affordable housing quotas, we're not even near 10%. There's only one town that's near it, and I can't throw it out of the top, grab it out of the top of my head right now, but, and it might even be Yarmouth, but, you know, there are other ways of doing this. So that's all, that's all the news there is to report right now and then.
Did, you said you had more other?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Well, if I did, it's not worth it.
Yeah, I went to Stony Marsh, it was very pleasant, you know, the egrids were all nesting, it was very nice. Stony Brook is a, you know, I think is part of the treasure, you know, in the mid and lower Cape. The RTA meeting, leadership is up, the budget was passed unanimously, and we're looking forward to, you know, more public transportation and adding some things on, we're continuing to look at rail and interconnect issues. But the big thing is that we've seen Fairbach's revenue. revenue and, and revenue go up, and then the most important thing that came out of the meeting is the Dial Ride Transportation Service will be, will have a soft launch in the middle of May, really excited about that, and one of the pieces on that is that they'll use technology in order to reduce the time that it takes to get your, to your appointments, and in the, in the trials that they've been running, people have been calling up and saying, well, I usually expect to spend two hours getting, you know, getting to my appointment, and they've got that down to half that time, so that's been, we're very optimistic about that, and hopefully at the MPO meeting, there'll be support for, they're putting the fixed route service studies in Sandwich and in Bourne, which is, which is part of that.
Well, when you were in Brewster, and you were dealing with homeless, I was dealing with Lyme disease right here.
Okay, excellent, good, we're all where we should be.
So we have all done, they're Monday.
Well, I hope so.
They're above.
All right.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.